Okay. They need to be minutes in this thing here, the packet.
I think she sent mine earlier. But...
Yeah. Okay.
Here.
Okay.
Action items.
Pardon? Well, I think we have something about cigarettes from there somewhere.
This was all up there under the consent agenda.
All of these?
Yeah.
Thank you. You think I could know that by now, shouldn't I?
Yeah. Pretty much, pretty. Yep.
Okay. Action items. Accept the city clerk resignation.
Jane, you wanna...
Sure, I'll speak soon. I got a call this morning from Carolyn Mahanna, who was our city clerk that we hired to replace or who selected to replace Nancy. And she indicated to me that she wanted to resign and would I come up and talk to her. And she just wanted to make sure everything was in place when she left and that she had a sign-off for the keys and that sort of thing. She appreciated the opportunity very, very much, but she...I'll summarize her comments in that it just wasn't a good fit for her. And so here's the resignation that's effective today. And that unless you have questions, that is as much as I know to share about it. So I think what we need to do is make a motion to...
Make a motion to accept it.
And I'll make a motion to accept the city clerk's resignation.
I'll second.
Motion by Jane, second by Justin to accept the resignation of the county clerk. I don't suppose there's any discussion on that one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Decide on the interim's clerk appointment and process.
You want me to speak to that? I've been doing a little bit of research and contacting for assistance since we've met with Carolyn a couple of times and indicated maybe a need for Plan B. So I contacted Sharon Irwin, who is the mayor of Early, and her clerk. And her clerk's name is Tammy Knuckles.
Tammy what?
Knuckles.
Okay.
I'm pronouncing it that way, but we can give you the detail later. Anyway, she's willing to, on an interim basis, till we decide what we want to do. And I understand through the city attorney that's most appropriate. We can appoint someone on an interim basis. She's willing to work 18 hours a week here in Auburn to get us through.
Work how much?
18 hours.
18.
And I should have, just a second. Her hours would be Monday, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., Wednesday, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m., and Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
What's that, 11?
That's 8:00 to 5:00.
8:00 to 5:00.
On Friday. On Friday. That's 18 hours a week. She has certification, municipal clerk certification. She has financial officer certification. She has all the skills, in my opinion, necessary to help us out through this interim period. And if and when we decide we want to extend the relationship, we can do that through an actual, rather than appointment process, a hiring process. So she would like a trial of six months. That will get us to the new year and through budget development. And it will also, I'm sure, help in her decision-making in whether she likes the job or wants to continue the job. She sounds very confident that she really is looking forward to this opportunity. I think Nancy started that whole trend of sharing city clerks. And here's an example of where it will intern benefit us if we decide to go that way.
Is she familiar with our systems?
Yes.
They got similar things there?
Yes. She's very familiar. And although she has data tech as her software, her main financial system software...
Stable fumble through...
She can definitely do the...is it Aspect or some...
Something like that.
Yeah. She can handle it. I am confident of that. She does not want any insurance incentive. So we were paying $335, I think, or $350...
$350.
To Nancy. So 18 hours a week that she would like a salary that she understands once, if we agree to this amount, that that would be it. We wouldn't be looking at raises down the road, not cost of living raises. $19.75 an hour. And I know that may seem high, but I think it goes back to what Nancy told us before. Is if we want someone who can be here Wednesday at 1:00 and pick up the pace as if...make sure there's just no...
This week, Wednesday?
Yes. She could be here.
Oh, she'd be here, right?
Yes. She's willing to do that. She's also willing to work on Saturday mornings from 8:00 to noon if we want her to, just to get accustomed to...she doesn't want that permanently, but if we want to be...meet the community...
Are we behind as far as our office stuff is concerned? No?
No. Nancy has graciously kept everything up to date. In fact, she came today at noon, over her noon hour, to get the council packet ready.
Question.
So, no, we're not behind that. I calculate generally, and this is just a comparison with Nancy's 30, sometimes 30-plus hours a week, and that's...I'm not counting on that other than to just state a fact, about an $800 savings from...although we paid Nancy 17 something...I might have it here too. But anyway, I calculated about an $800 savings, even though we're paying $19.75 an hour a month.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, a month.
What will we do as far as banking? Does she have access to the banks that we use? Do they have those in Early or on the way?
She said whatever it takes. If she needs to leave at 12:30 to hit the Carol Bank, she can do that.
Lake City would be closer, so...
Or Lake City. I told her that that would, you know, that's just part of the job.
Yeah.
She understands.
I don't know if there's somewhere between here and there that would accommodate that or not.
Could she do like you? That would be great.
I'm not sure. We'd have to double check, but there is Iowa...
I don't know what's on Lakeview for banks.
Gosh, I know there is.
Well, there's something on Main Street, but...
Farmers on...I forget what the...
I know, isn't it Iowa State?
Iowa State.
Iowa State, okay, yeah, from Sack.
Okay, so that would work.
Yeah. She's familiar with nuisance abatement, the whole procedure. They're going through that in Early. She's also very familiar with utility billings, even though Early doesn't have electricity. They do have water and maybe gas. I'm trying to think. If they have gas, I'm not sure. Anyway, she's familiar with the radar system. And I think you'll find her very well qualified. She said the Early policy is they get no mileage in...so if she does attend a meeting for us, and of course, any training costs would be split with Early on a prorated basis. So we'd only be responsible for 18 percent, let's say, of the training cost. That said, Early does not pay any mileage in Sack County. So if you're in Sack County and you're a council member or a clerk, you don't get mileage to attend Sack County meetings. For trainings and that are outside Sack County, we can decide what we want to do there. And she's very interested in working for us.
So we're looking at a permanent type of appointment for...
We're looking at an appointment for six months.
Trial period.
And then we can decide from there. The attorney said that's totally permissible.
Okay.
So if we decide to make it permanent, we can post the position. And in December, let's say we decide to create a tamper, a permanent position. We post it in December and we go through the interview process and put our qualifications out there, go through the interview process and make a selection.
So if somebody needs to get a hold on days she's not here...
She has a cell phone and she said she will answer each and every call. And she will give anyone her cell phone number. So...and she said she's known for answering it promptly.
That's not very good.
That's gutsy.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. But she's totally familiar with the whole utility payment process and the shut-off notices. And I was just impressed. So I'll quit talking and...
Well, you know that 1975, and she's...I don't know if she lives in Early or that, but you know, she's got some...
Very much expensive, really expensive.
Yeah, quite a bit of gas.
So if she can pick up the ball running and not have training and not have some of the stumbling blocks that we had, it's probably worth it.
And quite frankly, I think it would be a tremendous release for Donita and Nancy because they simply just don't have the time anymore. And it's...so the city clerk in Early is willing to help us out with a six-month trial appointment. We go through the appointment process and I would encourage you to consider it.
I'm just trying to think of day-to-day needs. Like yard waste site, can they get a key at the library?
Yes, we can change that process. They can get a key at the library.
I have a key, but I haven't advertised that at all.
Really? Yeah, I do too. So...
Should you arrest them? They're not supposed to.
Oh, I have a key. I have.
You're asking for a free one?
Yeah. I have a key. That's because we worked on the things throughout the summer and I just said I'm not coming up here every little bit to get a key.
So, you know, for next month, that...for next month, we can work with her and come up with those kinds of things where we need to change the procedure since she's not here every morning. But her hours, I think, will be more convenient for people, especially people that work.
I do too, definitely. What about the Early council meetings? What night are they on?
She said Monday night, the second Monday in the month would work for us, or for her. So I didn't ask when. I think they're on Tuesdays, the second Tuesday, something like that. She's totally into full disclosure. She said she'd sit down, she'll go through everything and anything you want to go through. I was very impressed with her, as you can tell. So without further ado...
I make a motion to hire Tammy Knuckles as a temporary city clerk for six months. Do I need to put any more?
A point.
A point.
Tammy Knuckles as the city clerk for six months.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Cindy, second by Justin to appoint Tammy Knuckles as the city clerk for six months. Any further discussion on this motion? This doesn't take a roll of cardboard, does it?
No.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Jane, just a matter of curiosity, what prompted you to call Sharon?
I was talking to Cindy when we...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And we...they would do training to help Carolyn out if Nancy was busy.
Yeah.
So I knew that...
I'm just curious.
No, when Cindy and I realized that Carolyn wanted...needed some more training, I don't want to get into evaluation, but would like some more training, Nancy's running out of time. So I sat down with Cindy and Larry and...
Actually, Larry suggested it.
Yeah, it was really more Larry that said he'd worked with Sharon Irwin and so impressed with her and so then threw that...
Sounds like a blessing in disguise.
Yeah.
Okay, continuing with the agenda, we had number four there, nuisance abatement mowing the property at 110 East Second Street and 309 Elm Street. Okay, 110 East Second, that'd be what, the Shell property?
The...
Hail property.
What? Hell property.
Yeah, shale, shell.
Okay. Well, there's no mowing there. I think you gotta get a mow loader in there.
We...
Man cleaned up first.
We waggle and do it.
I made a brush all the way.
Yeah.
What about spraying it? Can we spray it?
Just make bigger beds.
Yeah, that's just, that's not the actual...
I knew I'd have more weed than...
There's a wrangle, I don't think you spray it.
My big girl, I can.
Burn it off.
So who's gonna do the mowing?
Nobody has the right mind to mow if you're there without a mark in it.
Yeah, you're gonna, yeah.
It would be there walking through it, I'm going through it, skidding with the bucket down there and I'm gonna...
Scrap it out.
Yeah.
I don't think you can mow it, otherwise...
Is it that far apart?
You don't know what's in there and it's hard to watch or it's messed up.
Yeah.
I wouldn't trust it with more.
That 309 Elm, is that next to Irene Lammer's house? That's Dunby Asma's property. Oh, okay. But Jim Moore's been taking care of it and he's tired of taking care of it. I don't blame him.
Jerry, can we...not so much on the Gansmer, because it's mowable, right? It's just not...
It's been maintained so far.
More. Can we touch base with the city attorney on going in there with a skid loader? I'm sure it's...I just...you know what I mean, before you go in there and before maybe...
Yeah, we need to get some kind of approval. We can do it.
Yeah. Don't you guys think?
Yeah, in the event you destroy something from that...
Well, you know, even ruin the skid loader tires or whatever.
Yeah, that's gonna be our cost anyway. You know, you got nowhere to assess that to. Nobody's taken...
Only a guess, sir. They own their property, but we don't know.
Just being able to build...
Who even owns it?
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion that we...
How about Gansmer? You want me to mow that? Okay.
Yeah. Can we assess the cost to their property?
In both cases, yeah. I make a motion that we begin to clean up the hail property, the yard, and that we mow the Gansmer property. And both those properties have the cost of our labor and machinery assessed against their taxes.
Okay, now, how far are you speaking of cleaning it?
That's what...
Which one?
To mowable, Stan. To be immovable or maintainable, I guess.
Trying to clean it up as decent. Poor Maxine has some...
Yeah, I live with all that.
Yeah.
So I mean, like I said, there's trees, somebody's kind of in there, which I'd love to get rid of that. But I mean, by the shad, you know, there's only, either somebody's eye, like ours...
Pull them out. Yeah, to get the skid, the...
Well, the tree, I don't care, but I mean, I'll do what I can do.
Put your bucket down and go through it and power up the end line?
Let us make a phone call to the city attorney and find out how much we can do, like Cindy.
Yeah.
And then what we want to do. I got a motion out there.
Okay, repeat the motion, would you please?
I make a motion that the city of Auburn begin to mow the Gansmer property, I'll call it, the 309 Elm Street property, and assess the cost against that property owner's taxes. On the 110 East Second property, we're going to check with the...I'll check with the city attorney before we clean it up.
Jane, I'm gonna make that two separate motions, got two separate properties there? I think it'd be easier.
Okay, all right. So 309 Elm Street, we mow it and assess the property owner against his taxes.
Okay, second?
Second.
Motion by Jane, second by Justin. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, now the hail property.
The hail property.
What was that one?
What's that?
The hail one.
That's on Cindy's...
Say something, Don.
Do you want to say something to Don first?
He'll bother me, yeah, I'll talk to him.
Oh, people have to talk to him.
I know people have to talk to him.
Okay, well, we still have...
Yeah, I mean, still there, but I'll talk to him, just...
Yeah, yeah.
I know he's liking the land, so...
Okay.
Just wait, something said.
Okay, on the 110 East Second property, the city of...I make a motion that the city of Auburn look into the possibility of cleaning up that yard and what are...just, I'll read that. Look into the possibilities with the city attorney to clean up that yard.
And mow it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, was there a second on that now, Cindy? Motion by Jane, second by Randy to work on the 110 East Second property. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, appoint the IAM wing board representative. Iowa Association of Municipalities. Okay, leave that for it is.
Nancy must have done this all the time, right?
Yes.
Yes, she did. Nancy did. And isn't the MMTG board the one that she said only requires like once a year?
And one of them you can do on a conference call?
Yeah.
I think it was that one, wasn't it?
So...
So who wants to do it?
Who's gonna step up? That trusty is not my...
Well, everybody jump up at one time now.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Okay, what are you doing, Jane?
I'd like to do both. I'll do it. If I'm gonna do one, I want to do the other just because I want to...
Somewhat tie together, don't they?
Yeah.
Okay, IAM wing board, who's doing that? Yes, Jane?
Jane, she's doing both.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, that's okay with the group.
Do we...we don't need to act on the appointments, do we?
I would make a motion. Yeah, I would make a motion. I'll make a motion that we appoint Jane Otto to the IAM wing board and the MMTG board of our board representative.
Second.
Okay, motion by Cindy, second by Justin to appoint Jane to the two boards. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, facility aid in your court. Oh, here they are. I see it all. I see the big one, it's going down quite a bit already. Just about $3,000.
So from my notes, 441, 715, 725, and 011...
Eight.
Excuse me, 0811 should get disconnect notices, correct?
Yes.
What was it, eight what?
It's 441...
I got that.
715, 725. Eight eleven. Okay. M4 need to be...have the disconnect notices sent.
I make a motion that those four...
What about, just one second, 705 only give them half payment is an issue?
I think it is. They should have a notice sent too.
I believe so.
Yeah, 705 should also get a notice. Now, is that 692 the one that we had talked on earlier? Is that a completely different one? That's a completely different one.
Different one.
Because the other one was taken care of, right?
We're going to tonight.
Okay.
So I know which one you mean. No, that 692, I'm not sure what the situation is.
Well, they have a current payment plan set up.
Couldn't that owner was gonna pay half of it?
No, that was 705. They'll never, they'll never catch up with that amount of money. But they already owe.
$100 payments.
Yeah.
That's $100 on top of their bill. Bill? That's gonna take a long time.
Yeah. I just wasn't aware of this one, were you guys?
Can we do this on 692 for next month? Can we have a copy of the repayment agreement so we can see it and we can decide if this repayment agreement is one that we think is...
I think probably, if that's the payment, I think it needs to be substantially more.
Because they're gonna get behind again. It's not gonna get them better.
Right, and then we'll get to winter and they'll...
Right, yeah.
And we won't be able to disconnect and...
We gotta do something. So we'll do it next month.
I'll make a motion that on 692, the council gets a copy of the repayment agreement and we discuss the feasibility of continuing with that repayment agreement at the current level. That's my motion. This guy's kind of large.
We're talking two-year repayment at that rate, but it's not acceptable.
Well, that 692, somewhere around $7,500 to begin with? That's a different one.
692.
That's a different one, Bertie.
Yeah, that's a different one this one. We're gonna deal with the one that is currently shut off.
Yeah, the ones that we set are gonna get disconnect notices and then we're gonna talk on 692 next week, March.
And then the big one that you're referring to, Bertie, is I've got some information, actually got payment. So we're gonna talk about that next month.
Okay. So your motion now is to...
Okay, on 692, my motion is to review the repayment agreement on 692 at next month's meeting and determine if it's feasible to continue it at that level.
Okay.
At that repayment level.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Jane, second by Justin to review the agreement notice for 692. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I make a motion to send four...do we need a motion to send that? Make a motion to send 441, 705, 715, 725, and 811 disconnect notices.
I'll second.
Okay, let me get this read again. 441, 705, 725, and 811?
And 715.
And 715.
Do you know where you're going?
Okay. Was there a second on that?
Yes, indeed.
I did.
Okay, motion by Justin, second by Cindy. All those, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We should go and touch on that one now.
Yeah. Do you have the account number for that one?
Yes, 505.
Okay.
505 was, has been disconnected for the last month or so. It's a significant amount. And they have taken actions between this individual and the bank, have taken actions to repay. And of course, they do. Anyway... Repay all of the basic electrical charges. That means anything that the city of Auburn paid for electricity, they're more than willing to pay what they all initially, um, for that. But, if, they're also requesting that the city council approve a waiver of the service charges and the door tags over this three and a half year period. And keep in mind, this has actually been going on for more like five, so there's still some service charges that they are paying for in this balance. So of the $7,728.54, uh, $2,006.06.27 would be, um...
Well, this is the total again, Jane.
And all of the door tags and, uh, extra charges end up being $2,006.06.27 for a balance of $5,122.27. And I have, if we agree, there is a cashier's check made out to the city of Auburn for that amount.
For $5,122.27. Twenty-seven.
And I know we all think the same thing, this will never happen again. We'll never let this sort of thing continue for so long. It just, it just did, so... So I obviously feel like, um, we should accept the $5,000, $5,122.27 on account of 505 and reconnect their electricity, with the caveat that no late, no more late. If, if this person is ever late again, it immediately gets shut off. You don't pay your bill, it's a shut off.
I'll make a motion to, if you guys are okay, to approve this simply because it should've been, it wasn't completely that person's fault.
Yeah, we shouldn't have gone that way.
No, and we didn't know about it. It was partly our fault, so I think we're gonna, we're just stuck doing it. This is a learning experience for us.
At least we're getting our dollar back, other than the door tag.
Yes. So I'll make a motion to accept the $5,122.27 for payment of the bill and we will forgive the $2,606.27.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Cindy, second by Justin on the motion to accept the payment made. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I'm gonna need a copy of that or anything, but I'm gonna do it.
Okay, we're at the consider financial audit. I need help on that one.
Well, Nancy just kind of informed us that it's a good idea when there's a change of city clerks to have an audit and, um, she said that, also said that we could possibly get on a list for, what was it called, Jane?
A periodic exam.
Exam.
Sounds like a block.
Yeah, but that was the one that, where there was no cost to the city.
Correct.
So, um...
What would be the cost to the city?
Four to $7,000.
Oh.
Wow.
Yeah. So she highly recommends that we get on this list.
Is that the list that we are on anyway, that we get audited?
Yes.
So what would be our normal gap that we would...
She said we were about due anyway.
Okay.
So it's good timing, we just need to get the call in soon.
Yeah, certainly, if we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And I know Nancy wants us to have it done, so, you know, it's just...
A piece of mind for everybody involved.
Yeah, so...
I make a motion to try to get on the list for the periodic evaluation, is that what it was?
Yeah, yeah, it was exam, but it's...
Exam, alright.
Motion by Justin, second by Randy to proceed with the, uh, financial audit. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, public forum. Sheriff's Department might as well...
Well, I'm not here to represent the sheriff's office, I'm here to represent myself and, uh, the new owners of my place, uh, Richard Bruning Jr., I feel that we have a water meter issue. Uh, my bill was considerably, uh, higher this month. And I talked to Nancy and Jerry about it and they recommended that I come here and, uh, I guess, make my peace and ask for some considerations. I, we haven't lived in the house since, uh, September, been ready on it to be sold, it hasn't been sold. But this, uh, just came up with this month, the high water bill, where the previous months have been just at the, uh, rate where you, normal rate that you charge it, you know, regardless how much usage.
How many gallons did, were you charged with?
Well, this, uh, bill's for 257, our bill's normally 72, 76.
$257, so how many thousands of gallons?
And most of it's, it's, uh, 15,500 gallons.
Wow.
And, uh, I don't know, we just had, um, new electrical service put in there. Uh, we checked everything, there's no water running inside. Jerry checked the meters, um, I don't know, you know, there was some discussion about maybe somebody filled up a water pool or something from our outside. But, uh, in looking outside, spigots or they haven't been used or webs, there's no signs of any usage.
And the old toilets aren't running, kinda thing?
There's, there's no running water in the house. So, you know, I feel that...
I mean, the water's turned off in the house?
The wa, the water's on, you know, we use, use the, the normal billing, you know, for the minimum, so...
We talked about swapping them, getting a different meter in there.
Is that tied in with your shop?
We talked, huh?
Is that tied in with your shop water or anything?
No, no, it's a separate mill.
A separate meter on the shop?
Yeah, a, a separate term.
You have a spigot right to your, to the, to the west, don't you?
There, there's one to the east and then one to the north, right by the front door.
Oh, I was thinking you had one on the outside.
So the east is the alley? Or, or that, your shop sits on the alley, doesn't it? So, huh.
I mean, anytime there's been any activity around the house, whether we left a light on or something, we've been immediately called by neighbors, you know, if anybody would've seen anything, they'd have notified.
So Jerry...
In talking to Nancy, I guess my consideration was that she said they could replace the meter out, but then we'd be charged. I'm right in the, the, the point, I don't have access to the house.
The meter probably, he wouldn't charge him.
Things aren't finished or...
Do you settle those meters in, Jerry, after we, if we replace them to have them checked?
We wouldn't charge him if the meter was bad.
So the meter is bad, but then you gotta pay for the checking of it, testing it out.
Testing it. And...
But if it isn't bad, then you would have to pay, but if it is bad, he wouldn't have to pay, that's...
Right, so if it is good, then he has to pay for that too.
Which, then there's the draw, don't you remember?
Remember that?
But also, the meter was red one week, right? And then you went back the next week and read it?
Yeah.
And there was no usage in that week's time.
Oh, there's something weird going on.
Yeah. Right, did I explain that right?
Yeah, one week I had the, the electrical system replaced in it and, then the next week we get your bill and then the following week, actually it's just, you know, from when you read it, the day before the, the disconnect, I get the bill and realize that it's way up. I, I guess, I'm not concerned about paying the bill that comes out automatically, but if the Brunings have trouble, you know, and, and then, you know, it's, you know, if, if, if they wanna pay to have the watering meter checked, if their bills are high or something, you know, then I guess, you know...
Plus they have the sewer...
And if they find it is bad, I'd like consideration on my bill.
How much is a sewer charge, Dan?
The sewer charge is, let's see, 55.50? And, uh, the water's 145.86, so, you know, it's way up from, and, you know, we've checked inside, there is nothing running, so, you know...
Well, you said it's weird if you check every week before, then you know there's usage.
Well, there would have to be a leak somewhere, something's fishy. I asked, I asked Dan too, it's like, well, could they have been there and flushed the toilet and the toilet ran?
Flapper not quite seated right.
And then, say, the realtor or the new homeowner went in and shut it off, you know?
That's a possibility, yeah.
I don't know, it's just so odd that that one week...
Yeah, you would've thought there would've been water making that one.
If it was a meter issue.
But right now, the meter, you know, has been switched into the Brunings and, you know, so, you know, if they, I don't know when, you know, but they were supposed to, the finalization was supposed to be last Thursday, but for some reason, something happened with the bank over the abstract not being right with that 106 property that goes, was put with it, so it's delayed, but they're leaving it in their names. I guess, all I'm saying is if, if they're in the house and they get another high bill, you know, with the, not the normal, you know, what we've been having months of, which you can show on your records.
But you normally didn't have any high bills when you lived there?
No, uh-uh, we've never had this high, but... So, you know, if you would do something for...
Sounds like somebody used it, yeah, I would say, let's see what next month's brings and...
Yeah, if they, if they have a problem and...
Bring their bill up to the table next month, just to...
Do replace the water, the meter, if something's wrong, I'd like consideration on this.
Yeah, we'll make credit.
Don't you guys think bring their bill up next month to see...
Yeah.
Where they're at?
What if he doesn't pay it now, we'll wait a month and see what goes on.
Yeah, but...
And then there, there was some other discussion, you know, on, um, two swimming pools that were in within a block, you know, if, you know...
Were filled up.
If those were checked to see if their bill, you know, you know, showed reflected it.
What does this, what does this swimming pool hold?
Depends on the size.
Yeah, uh, I know, but I mean, like...
Anywhere from 2,000 to 5,000, you know?
Or 6,000.
I know, my sister's took about 5,000.
10,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
My sister's inflatable one was close to 5,000.
6,200, big ones, aren't they?
Yeah, the, the only, it's, I, I think we give you consideration.
Internet and everything and most of them, you know, said that most of the meters, if they're $400, $500, they'll come back and say the meter's good. But when they've had, paid to, but not accepted it, paid to have those meters changed out, their problems went away. I guess I'm not concerned for me, I'm more concerned for the Brunings, you know, if they have a problem, but if, you know, they've been a married aware of it, if they do have a problem, I would con, ask that you, you know, kind of work with them and, and get something, you know, found out. If, if it comes back, we'll consider it a that, you know? You know, no problems for, but if the meter is bad, found to be bad, if they do have to have it changed out, then I'd like consideration on mine.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yep.
Yeah. So, you'll pay it for now and we'll see what the future holds for Brunings and if we figure out it's a bad meter.
The re-impression back?
Yep. Fair enough.
So I'll give it to everybody?
Uh-huh.
That sounds like somebody helped themselves.
That's a, that's a lot of water. Maybe two or three.
Well, once you have to keep a check on it the next month again and compare it amongst everybody. Unless we take some action.
Is it vacant now yet?
It's vacant and because, uh, the closing didn't go off, so, you know, you might keep an eye on it for the next couple of months.
Okay.
You know, and if it goes back to normal what we had.
I was gonna say, I was gonna check it out a week again, just...
Excepted, because it did not leak in the house.
There is a, can you check it weekly, Jerry, to see if we're...
Yeah, if you got the keys, we didn't get it.
Can you do it radio?
We can't get, oh.
We should be able to read it from here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that battery operated or is it off the electrical?
Battery operated.
Okay.
Should be able to read it from here, should be.
Could you, could you bring it up right now?
Water is hard, it gives me the base, but electric can kinda pull around.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can read it towards the end of the week and...
Well, I, if I gotta do it, I'll read it when, when it gets to the right weather.
That's seven days, yeah.
Yeah, just, we'll just keep doing it every week and see what happens.
If there is a problem, let Janelle or Jane know and have a female listen. Or the Brunings, you know, 'cause I don't have anything to get into the house right at the moment, so...
Okay.
Okay, have we got that resolved and any questions?
We are going to defer the decision until we have more information this month.
Curtis, do you have anything?
Oh, I just noticed that you guys are still recording your meetings. I'm guessing that's because you needed to take notes for your, for your clerk, but I, I hope you keep recording them for the benefit of the public.
We have been...
Yeah, we have been.
Yeah, we have always, I mean, even when we have had Nancy here, she always recorded them and stuff, so, I believe.
Why, did you think we weren't?
I didn't know if you were or not.
Oh, wow, yeah, no, it's not, Dan.
I just came up tonight, 'cause I didn't know what the changeover, if you guys are gonna continue that practice or not, and happy to see you are.
Good.
I have a question on utility deposits and how does that work, especially for a renter? They pay us so much for, they had a time and then what, do they get a refund or anything eventually?
Six months.
If they go a whole 12 months without it being...
Delayed, or...
Delayed. And then if it's delayed that month, then they gotta go one whole year again.
They get the full refund then? One year?
Yeah.
I gotta pay it on time.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Yeah, so on time, if you get a letter in your door, you gotta another year after that.
I checked the book, I couldn't find it in my book, you know?
Kinda what they've been doing here, I mean, it's just...
Okay. I'll read it after the person that... Okay, now we're into the reports, public works.
That street up there by that feed mill, I don't think we went, I know we didn't go far enough. I think we need to go another 20 foot anyhow, about 30 foot to the west to kinda get that whole bad section out.
It works on both sides of the intersection.
Uh-huh, yes. I noticed that too.
Well, I, I think it'll stop, I don't know what, it, I just noticed the west side, the east side, it may stop, there, there is a, I think we've never figured that out, there was a trench always across that room for...
There was a trench something in there one time, but...
From what, though, I could never figure that one out. It was there when I started here and I've been, every time I bounced across it, I always kind of wondered what it was.
Sort of one?
No.
I'd have to ask.
Little hang, you know? I, I could go with millions, who knows?
Jerry, what are you thinking in terms of cost? I mean, I know you don't have the exact figure or anything like that, but 30 feet to the west and who's gonna do it and...
I could help if somebody kinda knows what they're doing, you know, I could help rip it out and help pour.
20 years ago, I knew what to do.
Justin volunteered, he said he was gonna do it, he knows.
I did, I saw that by his eyes.
Whoa!
I saw that in his eyes.
I had a heart attack, treat the pour next week.
Get a lot of custom pour, I doubt.
Is there a concrete pour company that you...
I'm just wondering if we can, if I get, like, Andrew Wardner, you know, it's just a regular local...
She's been formed out and dug up.
Yeah.
I mean, it's...
I mean, that's what they did.
That's basically all they did do it.
Yeah.
But it's, I think it's gonna keep carrying on and we're gonna do it.
Did they put something special in the concrete to quick dry or something?
No, nothing.
Okay.
You wanna head around?
That, I have no, they started that late at night and I didn't stand there, see what the heck they were doing.
Okay, we, we, we put this money into the street, our two towners, are they gonna, are we gonna talk to them?
Okay, we, we, we put this money into the street, are the people down there, are they gonna, are we gonna talk to them? Ask them not to, if they can figure out some other way?
Can't really, because the cement won't come, that's the way the road do, you have to talk to them too then.
I think the biggest thing is parking on the street.
Was parking on the street, Randy, that's what I'm talking about.
Little semis and stuff like that, uh...
You know, basically...
They could unload some other way or load or whatever they're doing.
There's no way they can unload in the bins unless they're on the street.
Yeah, they should've been, they, they were screwed up how they were put, put on the property.
And as the, over the years, as the trucks get bigger, they can haul more and it just has its...
Yeah.
Street for a while.
That's kind of grandfathered in, gee, generally said no.
Other city kid.
Mm-hmm, now, they've been doing it for some years, you just throw them out.
Well, there was no plan for, you know, if they had for 50 times, we can't grandfather him for 80 times.
Oh, I understand that, I'm just saying, boy, they unload, they're in the other way to unload. I think there'd be a big problem if you tried to stop them.
Is there, at least it's worth a discussion with Stan and...
Yeah, if there's any possibility.
Yeah, if there's a different option for loading and unloading, so from that. So are you gonna do that, Jerry?
He was kind of pissing last night.
I was gonna say.
Oh, was he?
Yeah.
Well, he's on the city council in Liddledale, you'd think he'd hear Stan.
That'd make difference, that's Liddledale, you don't care about Auburn. It's just the last couple of years is what really got bad. I mean, you can't, you gotta drive to somebody's yard to get by a semi. And that's, that wasn't that way the last few years.
No, they shouldn't be able to...
Well, that's always hanging over the streets after, when people not there. I mean, we have certain clearances we gotta maintain on our streets too, that become an issue at times.
Would he be willing to come to a meeting?
No.
Who do you want to talk to? I mean, what about us, uh, city attorney, see what our options are before we say anything? Could you do that?
I'd do that, right?
Yeah, before we even say...
That's where you started, right?
Like, you know what foothold you have and what's...
Yeah, let's contact the city attorney and see what options we have.
Regardless, you know, they did, they did start it, but I mean, it was bad to begin with. But they, they, they own that road, that street, you know, this is...
They don't own it.
That's, I mean, that's what they got in their mind, they don't really care.
Okay, it's not an action item, but I, we can...
Talk to the attorney, see what they say.
See what the options are, if they have, I think that's a good idea. Anything else? Jerry, do you, do you get noticed when they're gonna spray for mosquitoes?
Nope.
No, nobody does. They come in the dead of night?
They show and they send a bell.
Because I don't think they really know, it depends a lot on the weather.
And he said that that night, they don't know.
Seems to be a lot of them out there, that's all.
They, have they sprayed this year?
I don't think so.
But I haven't noticed hardly, I have a few bites, but I don't know.
Last Sunday that, I, it was, it was a chemical smell that was really strong. Was it maybe done?
Because we didn't smell it when we were in the town.
I had something happen about last week that I haven't had 30, 40 years. Had a wood dick on me.
You're gonna get them.
Yeah.
I've had three already, sure.
You didn't keep them, did you? No, they're bad out there.
They are bad.
City clerk.
I have no city clerk.
Hey, Joe.
Hometown Pride.
Thursday evening, we have a meet and greet over at Oldie Bolt at their community center to anybody that's interested in meeting the Hometown Pride coach. Bring a guest if you want, we have a cash bar available. Those of us on the screening committee are gonna bring our herbs over.
This is Wednesday?
Thursday.
Thursday.
What time did you say?
What's that?
What time, I didn't catch it.
Uh, meet and greet is at 6:30.
Before you go, you found out the list, I still had some more stuff in the...
Okay, go ahead, oh, sorry.
Tomorrow, your water pressure is gonna be minimal. The drinking water power is gonna get out of drain. So if people calling, they've got a lot, that much water pressure is...
Won't be over here answering the phones all day?
What's that?
Yeah, that's true.
Won't be over here answering the phones all day?
Well, no, we got your cell phone, you know, that's...
If you have issues, call Randy, yeah?
Yeah, I don't answer right here, so they ain't gonna have it.
Yeah, that's true too.
But I just wanted to bring up, so if somebody, what, we don't...
Maybe put it out on the glass doors. I know, but if they show up here to yell at somebody, they can maybe read that and...
I can, it's, it's only for...
That's what they're not...
It's only in the morning, right?
So it may be kind of early in the morning, if we take the shower, it just might, because I gotta... There ain't no sense draining 30,000 gallons of water down here, so I gotta...
How long does it take to fill that back up?
Come over to his house, he's the one that get the shower.
Let's turn the spigot on.
Just apply that to my bill, but...
In eight or nine hours, it'll catch up. Just, the thing is, I wanted to tell you guys, if you have a fire, you know, you gotta...
Go somewhere else, mutual aid.
Yeah.
How long?
That's good to know, okay.
Either you have to fill up in the bolt field thing, you know?
Or mutual aid, it's all do, we have problems.
I mean, it's all us that show up.
How long does that take, Jerry?
Kind of fancy, if they got any problems, they gotta do something. Basically, they're power worse to inside, kind of look at stuff and usually... We usually done by noon, but it depends on how kind of workers you get. Some are right at it, the other time you're spending an hour washing them, get the harnesses on and, and the ropes up there and...
We have to see if we have them calling.
Would you, would you just stop?
No, I'm just saying, you have to ask for the water, you can't just go take it from another town.
Oh.
If we needed it.
So that's for mutual aid ends?
When we tell you they coming up, you have to ask for the water. They just don't want you to have the water.
That's, that's the only thing, I just wanted to know if that, I wanted, like, since the two fires...
River's pretty full. You put pump on there.
Yeah.
It could though.
Tried that one time, it was fun.
Just going on the fire.
What else you got, Jerry?
That was it, that was, I just wanted to bring that up about the...
Okay.
Water pressure be kind of, you'll have water pressure, but it's not what you're normally used to, I mean, I gotta...
Okay, next item?
Stat on Emergency Waste, I did not attend last month's meeting. But I, I was told that they went ahead and approved the contract, or got the contract specs out for a bid. So they approved the contract specs for the new building. And that's all I got on that one.
Okay, Stat on Emergency Management Board.
They're in the meeting, but I don't, I haven't been notified.
Don't worry, really, emergency with that. Sheriff's Department.
Nothing? There's nothing big in that?
Washer water things.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is really strange.
It's a pretty thick packet this time, had a lot go on.
Yeah, 15 pages this time.
Yeah, well, somebody's been busy.
Yeah. I don't hear a lot of busy anymore.
And don't miss it.
Okay, Mayor and Council, Mayor doesn't have anything. Council?
I'm moving adjourned.
I've got to do...
Meeting adjourned, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No discussion on the motion.